Okay.
Okay, we're ready, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good morning to each and everyone. It's good to see everybody participating in this week's meeting. And at this time, we'll turn it over to our City Clerk.
This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, February 9th. We ask that you stand for our invocation led by Reverend Chris Farmer, Riverside Baptist Church, and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, I thank you for just the fact that we were able to wake up to see another day. I thank you for the rain. I thank you for the sun and everything in between. You bless us in so many ways, and I thank you for that all. I pray for folks here who are gathered here, for the ones who couldn't be. I pray for wisdom as they seek to do what is best for our beautiful city. I pray that you will continue to give them what they need in resources to be able to accomplish that. God, we know that what is right isn't always popular, and what's popular isn't always right. God, I ask for wisdom for this group to know the difference and to lead us in a way that will give us the strength, give us the safety that we need. God, we know that what happens around the world affects us and Mobile as well. And I just pray that you will just keep us safe. I pray that you will keep us close to you. I pray for the mayor, council, and all those first responders and others who are giving us direction. I pray that you will keep them safe. We pray for those who have been affected by COVID, their families, the ones who have lost loved ones and friends. We pray for your comfort. God, I ask for your blessings on this group, on every member and their families, and that you will prevail in all things, as you always have. We will give you glory, honor, and praise. In Christ's precious name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. President Manzi.
He's here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's supplemental emergency proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall. And in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will discuss during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of city government. The public is able to participate by submitting comments to the council, by emailing them to City Clerk, thecitymobile.org. Those comments will be acknowledged as received, distributed to council members, and included in the meeting minutes. All persons who would wish to make a presentation today will be granted three minutes. At the end of two minutes, a bell will sound indicating that you have 60 seconds to conclude or wrap up any presentation. As always, the meeting is live stream. The city's Facebook or on the city's web, or through the council's Facebook or the city's website page. Thank you again for joining us, and thank you for your interest in your municipal government.
Approval of Minnesota, February 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly moved in secondary discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from the mayor.
Good morning. It's good to see everybody this morning. In case you haven't seen the recent news talking about vaccinations, you know, USA Health has just continued to do a magnificent job over at the Civic Center. Now, the last two days, or let me say Thursday and Friday, they inoculated over 1,000 patients. I mean, it's unbelievable how they have gone from doing 150 a day to doing the over 1,000 a day. So compliments to them. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention what the infirmity health systems is doing also. They've been working on their program. Actually, what I'm getting ready to say occurs in Baldwin County at Three Circle Church. But last Saturday, they inoculated, vaccinated 1,500 people in a matter of three hours, which is an amazing feat. I mean, and so I've always thought, well, competition is good, and I don't think that that's what we're trying to do. But we are trying to vaccinate as many people as we can in a shorter time period as we can. And what our hospitals are doing, that would include the Providence and also Springfield Memorial and the doctor's offices. You know, I really sense that there is this all-out effort to do everything humanly possible to inoculate everybody. So really, really grateful for all that they're doing. So thank you. I would like to clarify some of the conversation about Mighty Grove Day on Tuesday, Fat Tuesday. But, you know, unlike New Orleans, the City of Mobile does not have a dedicated public health department as part of the city's administration. Our city code does not give us the authority to shut down restaurants and bars based on the health order of pandemic. And that authority does follow the Mobile County Health Department, which is not part of the city's administration. On a Zoom call earlier this morning, you know, the Mobile County Health Department has confirmed to us that under the current state health order, bars and restaurants are allowed to remain open. To that extent, to the extent that we do have control, like issuing parade permits, you know, we have taken decisive action. You know, and because of Tuesday being a holiday, we felt like people were going to come to downtown. And the idea was that instead of having them accumulate in the bars, that we were trying to broaden the footprint of where they would be by closing off traffic to encourage compliance with the health order by expanding the outdoor dining areas, also increasing our police presence downtown, and giving our policemen, you know, mask and face shields. Our police department will be working with Mobile County Health Department to enforce the current health order on Tuesday. I will say this, that if you are planning to come downtown on Tuesday, you need to be prepared to comply, you know, with that health order. Wear your mask and stay socially distanced. You know, there's no way for us to predict how large the crowd will be. But we're going to, from an enforcement standpoint, we're going to do everything we can to make sure that if people show up, that they stay healthy. So that concludes my remarks. Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I believe I messaged, and I believe I sent you a correspondence pertaining to this. Citizens contacted my office asserting that on last weekend there was a parade down Dolphin Street with the live band and people parading down the street. And the message I sent to you was whether or not the city gave them a parade permit to parade down the street.
No, no, we have not issued any parade permits for anybody to march down any street associated with Mighty Grove. And we will not be issuing any permits for parading. And furthermore, we won't be blocking off streets so that people can parade. And if they start to parade, we're going to ask them, you know, to disperse. And it has to do with much, as much about just public safety, you know, ahead of time, having not blocked off all of the streets. But no, we're not going to, matter of fact, we have had conversations with all the Mighty Grove organizations and told them, and I thought we had an agreement that they understood, that there would be no marching.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or concerns? All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam City Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I move the adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID-19 items be declared as such.
Second. Been properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals. We have requests for wave of the noise ordinance on April the 10th at 9/11 Dolphin Street and April 4th in Langham Park.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. Any discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Public hearings. Today is a public hearing to rezone property located at 1901 Hurtail Street, south side of Hurtail Street, 210 feet west of Prairie Avenue, from R1 to R3.
Is there anyone present that would like to speak off any commentary during this particular public hearing? Good morning, sir. If you could state your name and your address for the record, and then you'll have three minutes to make your presentation.
That's your turn. You can go ahead. Just say your name and your address.
James Creel, 709 Mandrell Street.
Lana, we're not, we're not on that yet. We're on the rezoning.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Stand by. Just stand by.
Yes, ma'am. Again, is there anyone that would like to speak relative to the Hurtail Street rezoning? Hearing, hearing no one, that public hearing is closed.
Public hearing to declare the structures at 19 Elizabeth Place, 307 Gaston Street, 1959 Moton Street, 1618 Bryan Avenue, 1151 Alba Street, 1207 Michigan Avenue, 709 South Carolina Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished, 709 Mandrell Street, and 2665 Bet B Street, 1162 Brussels Street, 1104 Partridge Street. Are declaring those structures, public nuisances and ordering them secured and demolished, and fixing the cost for demolition of said structures.
Is there anyone that would like to speak during any of those pub hearings just called by our City Clerk? Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is James Creel, 709 Mandrell.
Yes, sir. And you have three minutes, Mr. Creel, to make your presentation.
All right. Notice I got saying there was a lot of weed and bush and all over the house, which is not true. And I pay to keep the yard maintained. The house do need a roof. It's a maintenance, but full structure is still sound. And if someone stopped dumping trash on the yard, it wouldn't be looking so bad.
Mr. Dolphin Buck, are you connected? Are you with us during this particular meeting?
Yes, Mr. President, I am here. And I do want to say that with the structure at 709 Mandrell Street, Municipal Enforcement has found that we have problems with the roof. Specifically, it is leaking water. It has holes in the roof. And at this point, we would ask that the property owner, if he could, to work with getting a permit to fix the structure. But also, if you look in the packet, you'll see that the photographs, the main concern that we have is the shed in the rear. And that's what we really need to have the owner address immediately because it's an unsafe structure, and it's about to collapse. So what we would like to do is if the owner can step up and get a permit to address the issues of the shed and the main structure, that would allow us to go forward in him to fix his property and put an end to this nuisance abatement action.
Mr. Creel, is that something that you would be agreeable to doing?
Yes, it is.
Well, if you could, Mr. Dave, this is your district. What, how would you want us to proceed?
I would just, I would urge him to get in touch with Mr. Dolphin Buck and see if they can work something out.
Yeah, but we, but do you want us to lay it off for a period of time?
Yes, 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 yes. If we could lay it over for a month to see if they can get something worked out.
Is that agreeable?
If we delay action on it for a month in order for you to try to work something out with Mr. Dolphin Buck?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be acceptable.
Okay, why don't we do that? Thank you very much for coming down today.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, this is David with Municipal Enforcement again. And while we have the property owner, could we also convey to him that he does need to get a building permit? And while he's downtown, if he could work with Build Mobile and start working towards getting that permit so that when we come back in 30 days, he'll have his permit and he can start the repairs.
Yes, sir. Did you hear all of that, Mr. Creel?
Yes, I did.
Wonderful. I think he's amenable to doing just that, and hopefully Ms. Lana can give him Mr. Dolphin Buck's contact information so that they can have an opportunity to talk.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for coming down. That closes this particular public hearing. Is anyone else present that would like to speak on any of the other public hearings referenced by our City Clerk? If not, all public hearings are closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, to our Mayor Stimson, citizens and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning. Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. I rise today to discuss those matters pertaining to the Mobile Planning Commission and city property within our municipality. And there are two particular projects or properties that I want to make reference to today. The first one, we heard in the public hearing portion of this meeting, and I signed up last week to address it during my presentation so that I wouldn't have to do that during the public hearing. But according to what was shared by the council who represents that property on Hurtail, this would be pushed to next week. So if I'm not mistaken, we'll have more time to get some more information about it. But I would just suggest, based on what has been communicated to me from residents in that area, that there hasn't been enough level of transparency in regards to the property vote, with fear of what it could potentially be, but as well because of the individuals who have been displaced from their homes as a result of initiatives being pushed by the Housing Board or the Airport Authority and possibly even the city itself. And the homes that are potentially going to replace this area would not be sufficient for those families that have been dispatched from their original location. So I would like to see where we're going to ensure that those matters are addressed and that those concerns of the citizens are actually going to be heard. Now, the final piece that I would like to bring up for the attention of this council is regarding a property that was on the most recent agenda of the Mobile Planning Commission, in which there was a community meeting that was hosted the day before. This meeting was set up by my council representative, and it was facilitated by the attorney that was representing the applicant, Attorney Pipes. For him, well, for the specifics of that, I will refer you to his office, which I know all the contact information is available through our City Clerk's office. But what was interesting about this matter is that I signed up to address the body as well pertaining to that property. For whatever reason, there were inaccurate links that were sent to me and able to sign on. I attempted to phone a member of the commission while the meeting was going on, but that was unsuccessful as well. And basically, when the meeting was posted, the video didn't include those matters. Now, what was communicated to me by the staff, particularly from Mr. Hoffman, he said that the records of Mr. Pipes, as well as the letter sent in from our council president and those matters that I requested to be recorded in the minutes, were shared. And however, the application was denied. So now it's back onto the market of the Africans that originally were supposed to be there. But what was missing out of this, out of this information, the minutes, which I wanted to share with the council today, is the fact that the association president, they came forth and told the Africans what they wanted to see in that building. And for the record, I'll let you go and refer to that. I would love to speak to someone personally how the city can work alongside those organizations who are ready to implement worthwhile change in our community. But when we are alleviating information from our people, we can't expect them to move in a manner that's going to be most efficient for our city. So I hope that I can communicate with the president about those matters as well. I would like to know what is the status on the inventory list, which I had requested months ago. And that, and that's all that I had. We have an opportunity for worthwhile organization to utilize property within our city, which I believe will help dilute crime, as well as fill in the gap where our school system and our Parks and Recreation Center can't meet the needs of our young people. So again, instead of getting into further detail today with the amount of time allotted, I would like to meet with the necessary parties specifically, and we can come up with a solution. Thank you for your time.
President.
Mr. Vice President.
Yeah, I would like to respond to Hurtail property of what Mr. Hill had brought forth. That has been transparent with the residents that's around the area of 300 feet. Therefore, the Planning Commission sent out a notice, and the city council sent out a notice. That's still not including the meeting that I had on last Tuesday along with the administration, where we sent out a notice to have a meeting where all the residents that was 300 feet within the property, or Hurtail Street, the Mayans' property, was invited. And that was, that was a meeting there where the residents had, they came, and there was other residents that was not in the 300 feet that was also present. And also, I have met back in December with some residents too that's within 300 feet of the Mayans' property. So that has been transparent. Now, I believe that what Mr. Hill is speaking of is the tenants out of the Burnsville RV Thomas James Community, you know, is talking about they have a transparent. But the meetings was really for the residents that was within 300 feet. Now, all the residents that's over in the RV Thomas James Burnsville community is not moving over to the Hurtail Street. Yes, Hurtail Street is going to provide, accept vouchers, which the Housing Board is going to give out to some of those tenants, but it's half vouchers and half not. It's an affordable place. It's not going to be all the residents moving over there. That is not going to happen. It's going to be an affordable place for families that make $49,000 or less. And then that's going to be the front part of it, which is the first phase. And the second one will be where senior citizens would be able to move in and have a senior citizen community. So by being transparent, the neighbors have been communicated with my office, with the, of course, with the administration. I've met with them several times. But Housing Board, the tenants on the Housing Board, I do not know 100% of their future. I have asked questions in the past about those residents over in the Housing Board, but I cannot give you or give those citizens no answer. Again, that would have to come from the Housing Board, which is appointed by the mayor and everything. So as far as in the residents at the Housing Board, they may can say that they had no transparent about this particular property. And again, it's not designed for all of the residents to go over to this particular property, just a few to go over there with their vouchers. And then the other residents that's going to take part of that community, if it's go-forward, they would not have vouchers. They would be pretty much paying out of pocket. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. And I want to briefly address the other property there that takes its place. I did facilitate a meeting with some of the community leadership of the Now and the Bay Neighborhood Association along with Mr. Casey Pipes and a potential buyer along with Dr. Thomas Wright of the Mobile Baptist Association. I want to make it abundantly clear and crystal clear that City of Mobile does not own the property. The property is owned by the membership and the churches of the Mobile Baptist Association. Dr. C. Thomas Wright is the Director of Missions, and it would be up to the association to decide who they might want to partner with relative to gifting that building to any other nonprofit in our community. Could want to see ever so often, or ever so much, a particular program in that building. But unless that nonprofit is in a position to purchase it, it's my understanding that the Baptist Association is not in a position to gift it. If they were, probably Mount Pleasant Missionary Baptist Church, which is located adjacent to that property, would already have secured its property. And so Dr. Wright is the Director of Missions, and I would advise any nonprofit that's interested in having a dialogue with them to contact him directly. And I appreciate Ms. Violet Simpson and Ms. Beverly Crandall and the Gandis for coming out, Mr. Pipes for being there, Ms. Lana for helping to facilitate. And after finding out the sentiments of the community, I expressed our opposition to Mr. Pipes and the potential buyers, and they withdrew the application. And I'm appreciative of our representative, Ms. Best Rich, who kept me apprised of that development. And we're hopeful that the right property buyer, the right property, the right concept for that property will be realized in the not-so-distant future. So that pretty much concludes what I had to say on that. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. President. And I appreciate the sentiments of our Vice President as well. I believe those community residents were just wondering how the money had been spent in that area and on those properties. And I have also made communication with the Realtor since we're upon declared as well. So thank you for that, Mr. President.
It's no problem. The Realtor, I believe the building is for sale. They certainly willing to talk with anybody willing to talk with them. Thank you, Madam City Clerk.
Essential COVID items held over. 64004 ordinance to rezone property located at 1590 1574 St. Stevens Road and 1563 Basil Street from B3 and R1 to B3. 64005 ordinance to rezone property located at 4583 Cypress Business Park Drive from B3 and B5 to B5. 65006 ordinance to amend Chapter 60. Oh, do I need to take this one separate? Okay.
We need to take that one.
I'll take that one separately. 07007 ordinance pertaining to animal tethering. 08062 approved purchase order to Airgas USA for 10 respirator kits. 08063 approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Silverado pickup. 08063 approved purchase order to UJ Chevrolet for Chevrolet Silverado pickup. 08064 approved purchase order to Truck Equipment Sales for three Ford F-250 trucks. 08065 approved purchase order to Dream Seats for furniture for the fire station. 09066 appropriate monies from the 2020 Alabama Municipal Government Trust allocation to various capital projects. 21067 authorized contract with Southern Sciences for biannual groundwater sampling, statistical evaluations, and groundwater monitoring reports for both Bates CND landfill and Hickory Street landfill. 21068 authorized contract with DOT Construction Services for 2019 miscellaneous drainage repairs, Group A. 31069 authorized fiscal year 20 assistance to firefighters grant. 6080 approved settlement agreement with John Patricia Burke concerning 1775 Pike Avenue, 1801 Pike Avenue, and 2320 Borkin Boulevard.
Probably moved in second in a discussion. Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay. 60, 65066, 006 ordinance to amend Chapter 64 of the city code and to create Chapter 65 relating to urban forestry, the Mobile Tree Commission and protection and management.
Moved delay over two weeks.
Second. Probably moved in second in a discussion. You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID items being introduced for the first time, 57008 through 03112.
Mr. President.
Mr. Davis.
I would like to move for immediate consideration of items. 7093, 40094, 9596, 9798, 99101, 102, 103, 104, 58105, 6006, 6107, 6109, and 03112. The remainder delay over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
And probably moved in second in a discussion. You're not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'll take all of them together with the exception of 4101.
Basically, I don't think that you should comment on what was written by Hill.
Please mute.
We're going to ask if you aren't participating directly. If you could, put your volume on mute, please. We can hear your conversation. Thank you. Madam City Clerk?
57008 ordinance to amend Chapter 57 of the city code to add a new code section for food trucks. 57009 ordinance to amend Chapter 57, Article 8 of the city code. I'm sorry, I'm doing the wrong ones. I'm sorry. Excuse me. 37093 recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a restaurant retail liquor license for cracker barrel on Schillinger Road South. 40094, 9596, 9798, 99102, 103, 104. Are declaring structures at 19 Elizabeth Place, 307 Gaston Street, 1959 Moton Street, 1618 Bryan Avenue, 1151 Alba Street, 1207 Michigan Avenue, 709 South Carolina Street, 2665 Bethy Street, 1162 Brussels Street, and 1104 Partridge Street. Public nuisances and ordering them demolished and fixing the cost of demolition of said structures. 58105 declare weeds, noxious weeds, lean, group 1611. 60106, 107, and 109 are determining appropriations to the Excelsior Band. The Village of Spring Hill and Mobile Botanical Gardens serve public purpose and approving payment. 03112 appoint Sam Winter and Bradford Roy to the Short Term Rental Citizens Advisory Committee.
So moved.
And probably moved in second in a discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Gregory.
I am good to move ahead with the botanical gardens, but I thought discussion this morning was that it was going to lay over.
It's on the, it's on the reallocation in the
Just, just the reallocation, but the performance contract goes.
What's before us is the discretionary, the $8,087.
Okay. Oh, okay. Okay.
Somebody is paying their bills on the Zoom meeting. If you could disconnect from paying your bill on our Zoom meeting. We want you to pay it. Don't be late, but, but not while we're having the meeting. Thank you. Madam City Clerk.
Vote. It's time for a vote.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
4101 declare the structure at 709 Mandrell Street a public nuisance and order it secured, last demolished.
Only over one month.
Second. It probably moved a second, moved and second in a discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Lay over one month.
Announcements. The city council meeting next week will be held on Wednesday, February 17th due to the Mardi Gras holiday on Tuesday, February 16th.
That, that sounds great. I'm, I'm going to ask if we could move everything back an hour on next week, if at all possible.
You want to just skip it altogether?
No, no, no. We don't want to skip. I'm just wondering, instead of at nine o'clock, we could have pre-meeting at 10:00 and then the regular meeting at 11:30.
Well, we have public hearings that have been already called, advertised.
Oh, well, never mind. Never mind. We'll make it work. Thank you for reminding me of that, Madam City Clerk. Mr. Williams.
I just want to add on to the great news that the mayor called and talked about with regard to vaccinations. Providence Hospital, and I don't hope I'm not stealing Ms. Rich's announcement, but is in absolute full stream and is, is at max capacity, taking care of all medical facilities that have any dealings with Providence. And it's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people going through there. Don't know if they've reached a thousand like, like the others, but it is certainly their effort as well. And hopefully what the mayor told us last week and maybe the governor or somebody that talks to the governor is listening, that we can handle more. Mobile can handle more. If those who can handle more are going to get more, then Madam Governor, send it to Mobile, Alabama. We're ready. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President. My comment is going to be in regards to American history as it pertains to African Americans, since this is Black History Month. But we don't, we don't want nobody to think that black history is any different from American history. It's all American history. And I'm going to focus on the Civil Rights Act that was passed July the 2nd, 1964. The Civil Rights Act gave me the right to attend, me and other people who look just like me, the right to attend any college I want to attend, our university in America. Prior to that, I had to go to a so-called blacks college. But I had the right, I got, gained the right to go wherever I want, whatever university. And I, and I did. I ended up going to the University of South Alabama, which I would not have been able to go had it not been for the Civil Rights Act. It gave me the right to live anywhere in America I want to live in, in a community. So what normally happened, I was forced to live in communities where the property would not accrue in value over 30 years. It would be bad, the value would not have changed any at all. Got a chance to live in Shadowgate, my property doubled in value. Hickory Ridge, I've been in Lynnwood for the last 30 years where the property, where I received a return in my, on my investment. But the Civil Rights Act was filibustered for 54 days. The Southern Senators organized and they fought the Civil Rights Act. And it appeared that it was dead in its track because they could not break the filibuster. There was a man in California, Senator Claire Ingle, who had suffered a brain cancer. He was unable to talk. He was unable to walk. And it was believed that he was on his deathbed. He was not African American. In order to break the tie, they set out to see if they could bring Senator Ingle's in for the vote that will break the tie. They got Senator Ingle out of his bed. And they brought him back to Washington DC. They rolled him into the wheelchair for the roll call. Mind you, he couldn't, he, he couldn't, he couldn't speak. He couldn't stand up. The clerk called the roll. Senator Claire Ingle. He couldn't stand and he couldn't talk. He took his finger and he pointed to his aunt. And she said, the eyes have it. The filibuster has been broken and the Civil Rights Act passed. That's my story for today.
Thank you, Councilman Richardson. Ms. Gina Gregory.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a reminder that this afternoon at 2:00, we will hold an Administrative Services Committee to take up the proposal for Chapter 65, which of course, as you know, is in relation to the tree ordinance. Also tomorrow, the fire station, the new fire station number 18 that's located at Museum Drive and McGregor Avenue will officially open. We have a ribbon cutting set at 10:00. Everyone is invited. So I just hope to see you there. That's it.
Great news, great news. Mr. Vice President?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to give a shout out to the contractors that's on Baltimore Street that's doing the, the rework over there. I had several residents to contact me within the past week. Just excited about seeing the, the curves and gullies are going down and roadway. And even at Tintin Baltimore Street, which is also known as Oakland Apartments. There was a tree that was in the way and the residents had more concerns about that. And they was happy to see that things are being moved and action is going. Matter of fact, I had one resident from Tintin Baltimore Street, which just could not believe the the action that's actually, you know, taking place on Baltimore Street because pretty much they had, you know, given up on hope as far as in, you know, getting better roadways in that particular community. And I would like to, you know, throw out to the housing board that I hope one day that I assume that they would go in and do some type of renovation in and outside of Tintin Baltimore Street. But they can pretty much, you know, match the community because again, we're trying to upgrade that community. And, you know, having, you know, a little blight over there does not look as well, but, you know, you know, upgrading will give those, you know, tenants over there, you know, more hope, as one person had told me on last week, one of the tenants told me on last week. They're giving them more hope. And so I'm hoping that the housing board is looking at, you know, doing some type of renovation in and out of the apartments over there to, again, to bring more light and to the Baltimore Street area. And also on Tremere Park, I had a resident to call me on last week. Very excited about, you know, things are going on at Tremere Park. We know that Tremere Park has been vetted over, over years. I did not qualify for federal funding. Because of the one cent sales tax that this council had passed, Baltimore Street North Tremere Park would not be as for as it is today. And again, to thank my colleagues for, you know, pushing that one cent sales tax, you know, you know, further. Tremere Park is going to go through a five-year plan. And as I had told a particular resident on last week that contacted me, I said, the best is yet to come. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Ms. Best Rich.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to the meeting to discuss our tree ordinance and placing it in a new ordinance. And I think that is a very positive step, especially adding different species that will now be protected in our rights away and also on private development. It's important that we have everything coming together so that developers know what to expect. Citizens know what is possible. And I think the poster child was an issue at airport and university when some magnificent trees that now are on the list to be preserved would have been retained on the property. So I think it's very positive and look forward to that discussion. And, and our tree commissioners are voluntary, but they, their hearts are in the right place and and getting that set for their understanding and their, what their input is, is very important. So again, I look forward to the 2:00 meeting. Thank you. I wish everyone a very happy Mardi Gras, even in spite of our COVID interruptions, which is what I've been using now for almost a year for things that we are so used to doing. If you haven't seen the Yarde Gras throughout our city, please take time to do that. And I thank everyone who participated in that. There are really some great things to look at. You can do that in your car with people that you are used to socializing with. And again, that's out there for your viewing pleasure. And I think it's wonderful. And again, everyone stay safe. Very important right now. And just have a good Mardi Gras, but keep it safe and sound. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Rich. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to comment on the progress the city and the various healthcare entities are making with respect to COVID vaccinations. I know that infirmary health systems is moving ahead rapidly to reach the point of 1,000 vaccinations a day at the Mobile Infirmary with significant progress being made in Baldwin County, with North Baldwin Infirmary and Thomas Hospital. So our hospitals and our healthcare professionals are all pulling together to vaccinate our citizens as quickly as possible. I hope that hope that all of our citizens recognize that the vaccines are both safe and effective. It's important to our entire population that we reach herd immunity. There's two ways we can get there. Everybody can get vaccinated or everybody can get the, get the virus. And certainly being vaccinated is better than getting the virus. So I, I hope that as as our vaccinations ramp up and we have the ability to gather more vaccine that, that our citizens will step forward as soon as they're eligible in order to get the vaccine. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. And I concur with your sentiments 100%. We, we either will take the vaccine or run the risk of contracting the disease, the virus. And, and we don't want that. We've heard, all of us have heard some really touching and heart-wrenching stories and accounts as to how this coronavirus has impacted not only people far from us, but, but people that are in our communities. So let's go. Let's get vaccinated. I'm appreciative of all of the various, I'm sorry, Mr. Davis.
Well, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you like this, but, but I think, I think another important point needs to be made about why people need to get vaccinated. And that is that. To the extent that people who are sick with the virus are taking up hospital beds. They are precluding other critically ill uh, individuals. Uh, people with illnesses that don't have anything to do with the virus from, from getting the kind of healthcare they need. And so i- i- it's not just taking care of yourself, it's taking care of your fellow citizens by, by getting vaccinated as quickly as you're eligible. I, I, again, I apologize for interrupting you, Mr. Preston.
That's okay. That was a, a very great point. And I was gonna remark on something similar, but you have put enough emphasis on it. And let's just continue to be vigilant. Wear your mask. Wear your mask. Stay the appropriate six feet or more away from individuals, especially me. Until we all get this vaccine and we can get to the light at the end of the term. Wear your mask. Uh, even if you've been vaccinated, that doesn't preclude you from having to follow the guidelines. Wear your mask, stay six feet away, uh, save the laugh and joke until you're in the car by yourself. Uh, I want to comment just briefly off of uh, some of the commentary by our Vice President. And let the residents of Texas Street know that the same joy and jubilation. And pride that the citizens on Baltimore Street are exhibiting now as that street is totally redone. Texas Street is coming up next. Hopefully in April, we will be in a position to kick that project off. It will be a total rebuild. When I was running for this office, we made a commitment to those residents seven years ago. Uh, that we would work tirelessly to secure the funds, uh, to get that street. We worked. Uh, and working with our county commissioner, Ms. Sarah Ludgood and the administration, we have, we've done that. We hope to kick it off in April. Uh, and that's in addition to all of the other projects that are occurring in and around District Two. It's just a great time to be a resident in District Two. And as the Vice President said earlier, the best is yet to come. That pretty well concludes my comments. Any other announcements?
Move to adjourn?
Is there a second?
Second.
They probably moved in second. Any discussion? Here are no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?